The regular Camarillo Sanitary District meeting for May 27th to order. And let's take a roll, if you would, please, Jeffrey.
Director Little.
Here.
Director Morgan.
Here.
Secretary McDonald.
Here.
Chairman Kildee.
Here. Flag salute. Ms. McDonald?
Certainly. Please rise and join us in the flag salute. Right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Amendments to the agenda?
Are there no amendments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I need to ask that we've, I guess, vote on Item D, the consent calendar separately. When you get to that, please?
Sure. Do you want to put that in?
And I don't really need to pull it. I just need to vote on it separately.
Okay. All right. Do you want to approve the consent calendar with that deletion up until this point?
I'll move approval with the exception of Item D. Second.
Is the motion a second? Any further discussion here? None? Please vote. And that passes 4-0 with one person not here. Let's get down to Item D then. And that is the agreement authorized in city to acquire a permanent and temporary easements. Ms. McDonald, did you have?
Certainly. I need to abstain from this item. This has to do with the getting the mine over to Mars Farm, which I have abstained from before because they are a client of our firm and the individual owns this property. Mr. Martinez is one of the partners in Mars Farm. So therefore, I do need to abstain, not because I have a personal financial gain, but just so there are no, any concept that there might be because they are a client of our firm. I should say the firm for which I work. That makes a big difference.
I'll move approval. Second.
Is the motion a second? Any further discussion? Please vote. That passes 3-1 with one abstention and one absence. Okay. So that gets us down to comments from the staff. Is there any comments?
I don't have any comments, Tom.
No, Tom? Any comments from board members tonight? All right. That get us down to the adjournment. However, it's June 3rd at 6:30 at the library. So with that, we're adjourned.
I'll call the meeting of the City Camarillo City Council to order. Let the record show that all members are present except Councilmember Craven. First item will be the, any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have one. It's on the consent calendar, page 2 of your agenda. Item F. And we'd like to remove that from the agenda, please.
Not place it anywhere, but just take it off?
Just remove it for now. Yeah, please.
Is there any other changes to the agenda? If not, we move forward. No presentations. Consent calendar.
I'll move the approval with less Item F.
And, Your Honor?
Yes.
As we vote, may I ask that we vote on Item J separately as well because it's the same item as what we dealt with on sanitation district?
We'll remove Item J from that motion, if that's all right with the maker.
It is.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
Moved it seconded to approve the consent calendar with the exception?
Oh, Your Honor, one question. I don't want to take it off calendar, but Item C, what kind of, is this distilled liquor or is this for staff? Distilled liquor or is this wine? I couldn't make it out.
I'm going to defer to Joe. I believe it's distilled.
It will be distilled liquor.
Okay. Distillery.
All right. We have a motion to approve the consent calendar with exceptions of F and J. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please vote.
There we go.
I'm used to, I'm used to not having a machine around.
Hard to run. Won't run that many hats.
All right. Now we go to Item J. And you want to make the same comment?
I will. I do need to abstain from this. It's the same item that was on the Camarillo Sanitation District's agenda. And again, it's because of one of the, the landowners is a client of the firm for which I work.
Move the approval of Item J.
Second.
Moved it seconded. We approve Item J. All, please vote.
You're doing good.
I know it. I'm trying not to. Okay. Motion is carried with one exemption, extension. All right. Moving forward to Item Citizens' Appointment Committee Recommendation.
The appointment before you is for a position on the Council on Aging. We had one of our members, which we recently reappointed, move like one block outside of the city. So we needed to designate a new member. And that recommendation comes to you from the Citizen Appointment Committee. And I believe I forwarded you her application so you could see her qualifications.
I would say that the committee did initially interview her back in February, March. And she's a very well-qualified person for this position. So is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to confirm the appointment of Karen Swisher as recommended.
Second.
Go ahead.
Moved it seconded. Please vote. Motion's carried four to nothing. Moving on to Public Works. Public hearing regarding resolution of necessity for acquisition of 1.2 acres recycled water distribution line. Is there?
Tom, are you going to talk about the, I believe we're going to open the public hearing and then continue the item this evening?
Oh, okay.
Is there some language there?
That is correct. Perhaps I can defer to the city attorney to help us with that.
Yeah, that's exactly what you should do, is just open the public hearing and then the motion to continue the public hearing to June 24th.
All right. All right. Is there any comments? If not, we'll hold the public hearing and reschedule it for June 24th.
You might ask if there's anybody in the audience that happened to appear today.
Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on Items A or B? One is, were public hearings regarding the recycled water distribution line. Hearing none? Okay. Is there a motion to approve, to hold it, or do we have to?
There'd be a motion to continue the public hearing.
I'll move to continue the public hearing to June 24th, 2015.
Motion to continue to June 24th meeting? Please vote. That motion gets approved four to nothing. Moving down to the Community Development Affordable Housing Agreement, Fairfield.
Could I interrupt for just a minute, Your Honor? Was the intention that that motion applied to both Items A and B then?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Affordable Housing Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor Little. Mr. Mitchell will be presenting this item.
Okay. Steve?
Good evening. On December 3rd, 2013, the Planning Commission approved RPD 186 for 368 apartments and RPD 187 for 82 apartments for a total of 450 units for Fairfield Camarillo LLC on the former Imation site located at 350 South Lewis Road. Because the developer requested a waiver of the provision of RV parking, the development was required to provide at least 5% or 24 of the units for very low-income residents. The 24 affordable units, which are distributed throughout the two sites, will consist of 13 one-bedroom units and 11 two-bedroom units, with RPD 186 providing 10 one-bedroom units and nine two-bedroom units, and RPD 187, which is still on the left-hand side at the bottom, providing three one-bedroom units and two two-bedroom units. An affordable housing agreement has been prepared to implement the program. The agreement provides that the construction of the 24 restricted units will be completed by June of 2018. To assure the timely completion of the restricted units, the city may withhold the issuance of certificates of occupancy for a portion of the units until certificates of occupancy have been issued for at least 22 of the restricted units. Under the terms of the agreement, all 24 affordable units are restricted to very low-income households. The agreement further provides that the rent charged for very low-income rental unit may not exceed the applicable affordable rental rates. Applications for rental of affordable units will be screened by the affordable housing developer, with the applications forwarded to the city for a final review of the eligibility of the applicant as a qualified household, with preference given to households that presently reside or work in Camarillo. The agreement also requires the affordable housing developer to submit annual reports to the city showing compliance with the terms of the agreement. The Affordable Rental Housing Regulatory Agreement is binding for a period of 30 years from the date of the final C of O, that the final C of O is issued for the required affordable units. All conditions, covenants, and restrictions contained in the agreement are covenants running with the land and are binding for the benefit and in favor of and enforceable by the city against the developer and its successors. Approval authorizes, authorizes the city manager to execute the Affordable Rental Housing Regulatory Agreement for RPD 186 and 187 for Fairfield Camarillo LLC. This concludes staff's presentation.
Any questions of staff?
The presentation.
Yes.
I do. Can you tell me why we're only requiring 5% very low income versus a higher percentage?
Because they're rental units. That's what the code specifies when they're only asking for one waiver of code requirement, which is the RV parking.
And so each one of them is going to have 5% or 5% for both?
5% total.
And, and both of them wouldn't, wouldn't be required? Let me, let me try this again. They're, they're being considered together then as one unit?
They were approved separately, but they're both included under one agreement.
So if they're approved separately, wouldn't each one of them have to have the requirement for RV parking? And wouldn't each one of them have to be considered separately?
Well, I believe that 5% of each project, 5% of RPD 186, 187 would be five units, and 5% of RPD 187 was 19 units.
So we're getting a total of 10% overall if each of them have 5%?
No.
Am I adding, am I not doing this right?
Let me step in here and provide some clarification since I was involved in this project from the beginning. In terms of state law, when it comes to affordable units under density bonus housing law, the developer has an option to provide either 10% low or 5% very low. And the developer in this case has chosen 5% very low. For this project, in accordance with city council policy, each individual RPD carries the responsibility and burden for its own affordable housing obligation. So when we say 5%, each RPD has 5% of its total units in affordable housing, as required by density bonus law.
Okay. So each of them do, and, and so the key here is it's the very low income?
Yes.
Which takes us to the, okay.
Any other questions?
I see that the agreement is binding for 30 years. And as we know, 30 years goes by. What happens after that? Do they, what happens to those units after 30 years?
They typically convert to market rate units.
Now, what's a typical agreement on that? I've seen 30 years. I've seen 40 years. I've seen longer, too.
When this was approved, the law in effect required it to be a 30-year term. Future agreements will actually be longer based on updates in state law.
So that'd be longer than if there's other issues with similar, a similar project potential that could be longer than 30 years?
Yes. I believe they're going to be 55-year terms.
Okay. But this one's under the 30-year?
Correct.
Because of state law?
Yes.
That's state law? Okay. All right. And then also, it says that preference are going to be given to those individuals that either reside in Camarillo or work in Camarillo?
Yes. That's been a current policy and practice of the City of Camarillo to try to provide preferential treatment to people that reside or work within our community.
Now, would they obviously, how we're going to check is obviously the address that they give before, you know, they potentially can give one of these and/or their job address? Is that?
Correct. They need to verify that they qualify for the affordability requirements to be approved to occupy one of these units. And the city does the qualification, kind of like a pre-screen for a rental unit. And through that screening process, we can try to provide preferential treatment to people that work or reside within the city already.
So there, there would be potential for all of these units to be rented by current City of Camarillo residents and/or those that work here now? There is a potential for that?
There is a potential for that, yes.
And who will do the screening on that?
It's handled currently by Mr. Smith and Martin Coslove, Burke Williams Swanson.
Okay. And they obviously have a lot of experience on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We've been doing this for some time.
Okay.
I've got a follow-up question on that. Let's say after 10 years, the original occupant from one of these moves out, is the same requirement still in effect?
Yes. That's a good question. So if there's a unit that's occupied for 10 years and that person is in a better situation, they move on or move up, then that unit becomes available. And there's typically a waiting list of people trying to qualify for affordable units within our community. And so we would go to the next person on the list, verify their qualifications, and then put them into that unit.
I thank you.
And then they would be allowed to remain for the 20 years left.
Okay.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Remind me, is there a sunset agreement on these units?
Yes. It's 30 years.
30 years, yeah.
Okay. Is there any other questions?
Can I follow up on, on the question the mayor asked? So the, if you've got your waiting list and you've got non-resident and residents, does the resident still take priority?
We can do our best, but we need to be very careful that we don't discriminate amongst applicants either. So we try to provide preferential treatment to Camarillo residents, but fair housing law may preclude us from being 100% restrictive in that regard.
So their best shot is, is when they're new?
Yes.
And then after that, it's a little bit?
And then we just want to comply with state law.
I have another question on this.
Yes.
Is there any age restrictions on these?
No, not that I'm aware of, no.
No age restriction?
Okay. It's a pleasure.
Your Honor, all, I, just a quick comment here. I was hoping that we might be able to do the affordables, more affordables than what is there. But I see because of very low, and also I was kind of hoping it'd be longer than 30 years. But if that's what state law says, that's what state law says, so.
Well, that's, that's the problem with having state laws that are one, one suit fits all, as opposed to allowing us to have some discretion. Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved it seconded. Any questions? If not, please vote. Motion carries four to nothing. Move down, there's no items under, to, to the closed session. You want to make the announcements now, Mr. Attorney?
Yeah. This should only take about a half an hour. We'll have a
Sure, sure.
Conference with a real property negotiator. That is Items A, B, C, D, and E. The agenda lists the properties, the legal authority, the agency negotiators, the negotiating parties. Under each, a negotiation is for price and terms of payment. So I will identify the properties that are the subject of these closed sessions. One of them is the former fire station. The second one is the former library. The third one is the proposed Hotel Conference Center site. The fourth one is the 12-acre site, the one that's located to the west of the Home Depot. The last one is the Cedar Oak property. And then we have another closed session. This is going to be conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. Number of cases is one.
Counselor, do you foresee any announcements coming out of any of these closed session items?
I don't expect there to be any, but of course, if there, if there are any, we'll, we'll make them. But it's certainly not expected at this time.
Thank you.
Okay. I will.
It's going to take a while.
Turn to closed sessions after we finish the agenda. New business.
Okay, go ahead and go.
Oral communications. City manager?
I had two items, two quick items. One is we are moving along with the Camarillo Hotel and Tourism bid. We had our third board meeting. We have a meeting once a month. We had our third meeting. And we are developing policies, a budget, and entertaining some initial requests for some marketing support from a variety of different groups. So that's moving right along. That's a seven-member board. And the, it's amazing. The, the revenue is coming in almost to the penny as projected. So I think that's a good thing. Not too much, not too little. I think it's right on the money and they, it's what they represented to the city council on what their revenue would be. And I think it's accurate. So that, that's great. And then the other item is I did attend the Chamber of Commerce Business and Legislators' lunch meeting last week. Our new assembly member, Jackie Irwin, spoke. She did an excellent job and gave us some of the latest information at the state level. And she was very open to our local concerns and issues. We had to cut the questions off. There was so much productive interaction with, with our assembly member. And that's it. And RP, you had an item, and then Tom also had an item.
Yes. My item's just a, a quick informational update that we thought you would like to hear about. We were just recently awarded the 2015 Certificate of Excellence from TripAdvisor, which, as you know, is a popular destination ranking website. And we were rated number two, the number two attraction in Camarillo, following the outlets. So the library is the number two attraction in Camarillo, and we've been awarded a What about Camerio House? Well, it
Well, that's number three. We only, we have three items to choose from, but
So we thought
Just kidding.
Be pleased that the, the community, as well as our tourists and visitors, ranked the library that high.
Great.
And it's fantastic, of course, to be on such a nationally, whatever, world-renowned website to get our, our listing on there. That's the, that's the important part, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right. City attorneys?
Tom also had an item.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom.
Your Honor, and this is just a real quick informational item that I think it was a few council meetings ago, as we were talking about the drought and water conservation, a question was, could anything be done around City Hall to help reduce our water consumption? And what we have historically done each quarter, roughly four times a year, is we have accent plants. And the top photo shows the current view of looking at the front doors of the council chambers, the dirt areas where we normally plant accent plants, seasonal plants that tend to last for a few months and then, but they provide a lot of color and accent the rest of the landscaping. Those tend to be more water-intensive, and so we're now proposing to change out, and instead of the typical plant types that we've used, go with more drought tolerant, some succulents. The bottom photo shows that it still provides color, maybe not quite as much color as what's been there before, but it does provide some accent. There's a couple benefits. One, of course, is that they're drought tolerant, so they use less water, so that we can show that we're, we're just like everybody else, doing our share to try and conserve water. Also, these plants tend to, are hardier and last longer, so we won't have to replant them as much, and they'll be able to help us with the landscape budget in that regard as well. So we're actually moving forward with this tomorrow. I just wanted to draw to your attention, let you know we are being conscientious about saving water.
Yes.
A question. All of the succulent, succulents and so forth, none of them have stickers or prongs or the cactus kind of variety?
Not, not at least right adjacent to the walking path. There may be some a little further setback. I can't say that all of them won't have any, any sharp edges that
Not sure that's the best thing for us to put in them.
Well, I'll check with our guys to make sure that we, you know, do the best we can to avoid using those. There is a limit on, you know, most succulents have some thorny parts to them.
That's not probably the best thing to have in a public space. And I'll give you my two cents worth. Personally, I think having what I call clean dirt at the moment is, sets a better tone for the public because we're not planting. That is actually the best thing you can do to save water, so that's my two cents on that one. But that's probably too late because you're starting tomorrow.
Mr. Morgan, did you have a question?
We got a lot of little rabbits running around on our stuff. They could be happy?
No, they're not.
Yeah, the accent plants don't sustain the rabbits. They're, they're, it's been dirt, and they're doing fine, so.
Good.
They don't have as many places to hide.
Okay. Any other comments? Any other questions? Thank you, Tom. All right. City Council, let's start. Kevin, do you want to?
Yeah. Went to one meeting, a VRSD meeting, May 21st. Also, maybe staff can comment a little bit. There was an article in the paper about apparently a couple of situations where they have either started to put in drought-tolerant front yards, and they did not actually let the city know. And the city came by and apparently had a letter, oops, a letter. And there was a comment that maybe, you know, we should do a little bit different job of how we are promoting this. And maybe Joe or staff member, could you maybe, again, maybe verbalize how the whole process?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Kildee. We do have a free zoning clearance process whereby people that are working towards water conservation efforts and adjusting their landscaping in their front yard can come in to collaborate with staff. And there's no fee. And we ensure that it meets our minimum standard to have some level of landscape area within their front yard consistent with our city's landscape standards and guidelines. And we are updating an article to put in the next city scene newsletter that'll be distributed. And if that doesn't successfully get the word out, we can also look at potential utility bill distribution.
Could you also, maybe for the public, Joe, reiterate the telephone number they might be, they might be able to call, just in case they want to call first and make an appointment or?
Sure. It's 805-388-5360.
And it is on our website, of course, too? And they can always get on the website and?
Correct. Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Very good.
Go ahead.
I think that's it, Your Honor. That's all I have tonight.
I have a follow-up question on that just before. Did I understand that from this past week that the Metropolitan has cut back on the amount of subsidy they are going to be providing for lawn conversions?
From what I understand, as of today, they're going to be increasing the amount of rebates that they're going to be offering to customers who replace turf.
You're going to increase it?
They're increasing the bank
Oh, the bank.
That's available to provide
But I think for the individual, they're cutting back, aren't they, on the?
As of today, the news that I heard and the media
Bill, I have one. Can I just do a follow-up on that?
Sure.
Yeah, also, an individual came by the store, and I think he came by the city, but he was talking about having buckets that people can put in their shower when they run it. And maybe there would be a supply at City Hall and other places that they might be able to pick some up. Was there any consideration or anything on that?
I'm going to defer to
Okay.
Mr. Fox on that.
We just received that today, so we're going to be looking into it and responding to the person. We received a letter from them to that same effect, so we'll be responding.
Okay. Very good. I appreciate that. Thanks, Bill.
All right. Councilmember Morgan?
Yes, your honor. Um, I was gonna report to you on the, the Contract Cities meeting, which Charlotte and I went to, is fantastic. There's so much to give. I gave some of the information. We, hopefully, there's some positive stuff that Mr. Cosmont presented that will help us with some, some of our, uh, projects. But, uh, it was one of the best, but I'm gonna wait until she gets back so we can put it together and make a presentation, so you can get all of it, the most important parts. Very active, went along, all that. Um, you got to, excuse me. Um, I went to Boy Scout, uh, Eagle Scout Award over next, uh, next door, uh, this past week, and, uh, a great bunch of people. When you go to that, it's always positive. For Eagle Scout, I think you like that, too, Bill. We love to go to those things. Um, anyway, I hadn't, didn't do anymore. I've been sick for three days. I'm over it now, I'm, hopefully. And, uh, I'm, I'm running around and, like I used to. But the voice is going, so bear with me. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, councilmember...
Certainly, thank you. Um, a couple of meetings. We had a VCOG meeting since we met last and had a presentation from Cuyahoga Water Company, um, on water, and then, um, from Skagga State of the Region, so it was a very interesting meeting. Um, also, I want to make sure you all got the notice of the annual meeting for VCOG, which is June the 18th, um, in Thousand Oaks, the stagecoach in a museum. If you recall, the, um, tradition is whoever is the chair hosts the annual meeting, so last year we had it at the, um, airport at our museum, and so they had to find, um, something to try to outdo Camarillo, so we'll see. But should be an interesting program, so be sure to get, it is free, um, of charge to, um, elected officials and to, uh, our management staff. Also had a meeting of the Finance Committee, um, and we're working probably the most important thing at the moment on the annual review of the investment policy. And I had also had a note regarding, um, what you can do to save water and how we, um, interact with our, our, um, community on it, and I'm hoping that, um, the next city scene will also have a suggestions, that bucket in the shower, I know a lot of people who are doing that, and it's amazing how much water you can collect enough to at least water your plants and your pots on the patio or whatever, come out, come out of your shower. And it, it doesn't take anything special, just any old bucket will do as you warm up the water in your shower, so. We all did that during the last drought, it certainly works. But I know there's a lot of other things out there that maybe people haven't thought about, so whoever's writing the article for city scene ought to go out and see what some of the other communities are, are telling their, um, citizens to do, because I think you'll find a few new ones that we haven't talked about too much. Um, going back to kind of the finance side, sorry, I got a lot tonight. Um, we continue to get letters regarding the Ranch Foundation and their financing and their accounting, and since it's kind of becoming audit season around City Hall, I, I'd like to request that perhaps we have our auditors spend a little bit more time. I'm not asking for a forensic audit or anything else, but just spend a little bit more time so that they can reassure us that they are indeed following, um, generally accounting principles as far as the, how they record their income, their revenue and their expenses, just so that we can kind of put this, you know, assure the public that all's well.
Sure, we can do that, and I can also comment that I did meet with the treasurer, I believe, the newly-appointed treasurer from the ranch, on, about a week ago, and actually forwarded to him the contact information for the auditors as well, so they're gonna have some discussion as well, as they began to, uh, craft the, for this 14, 15 year.
Wonderful. That's what we have. We all love auditors, right? Right, right, Ronnie?
I can sneak on the road.
Um, I have another one, and I don't know if some of, of the rest of you have received this request. Several members of the public have requested, um, under the category of public art, and I know we all met, uh, a month or so ago regarding public art. And this has to do with a peace poll. And I'll pass, I have a picture here, I'll pass it down. And what I'm requesting is, is that we place an item on the agenda to talk about this. It's not, um, it's not huge. I think it's 10 feet tall, but not very wide. Um, it's unique in that it has seven sides, and on each side you can have in two different languages. And I think the expression is, "May there be peace throughout the world," or something like that.
"May peace prevail on earth."
On earth, okay. I knew there was something like that. Um, so it's, it's, you know, very subtle, but yet sends a message. Um, the group would like to raise the money to put it in, so what they're asking of the city is could we find a public spot that they could put it? Perhaps Constitution Park or the library might be a great spot and one of those places where we can't seem to get a tree to grow, perhaps. Um, that's what they're asking of the city. So I would like for consideration if we put that on the next agenda so that we could let this new group...
Can I go to committee?
Oh, I don't know why it would have to go to committee, but...
Well, I think we could talk about it, and then if need be, we can refer to committee.
I would think it wouldn't be hard for staff to come up with a couple of spots. I don't think it has to be a long, either you like it or you don't like it, it's kind of...
I had the opportunity to talk to one of the leaders of that organization at a, at an event, and, uh, they are trying to raise money. They do have, their preference is really Constitution Park, but, uh, I think they'd be happy to put it wherever we decide to...
Is that a local group?
Yeah, it's centered around Camarillo.
What's a, what's a group again, named?
Uh, it's just a group of individuals.
Just, just individuals. It's not a group, one I talked to was...
Yes, and it's not overly expensive. I think when all is said and done, we may talk about, talk $4,000 or $5,000, so it's not a huge, huge project, and, uh, in fact, I have information I'll give staff as far as the website to look at it and so forth, and, but I, I think that rather than making it a long, drawn-out, um, process, it shouldn't be hard for us to discuss it, so I would request that it be placed on the agenda. Um, another one I had from last time, we were talking about, um, under the, um, special event permit for the Fiesta, we started talking about barricades filled with water. And I had asked the question, how many gallons of water were in them and what did we do with them? And in the past, I guess the water had gone down the storm drain. But it just so happened that the Amgen Tour went through the city of Los Angeles that next weekend, so I have pictures showing you what the city of Los Angeles does with their barricades. They pump the water back out and reuse it. So if we're going to fill them with water, I would like to suggest that we find a way to at least water a thirsty tree out there with the water, because according, and I just Googled this, but they can take between 89 to 153 gallons of water, and that's a lot of water, if you're a thirsty tree. Um, let's see, I have two more, I'll go quickly. At our last meeting, I had mentioned my dismay regarding the planning commissions continue to, wants to process some residential developments, um, kind of business as usual while we're in the middle of the drought. And it's something I still personally can't understand, and I, I'm having a hard time explaining that to the members of the community that asked me about it. So therefore, I would like to request an agenda item for the next meeting to have a discussion of a potential moratorium on new building and grading permits for residential developments until we are out of the current down, condition. And as part of that discussion, if not a complete, um, moratorium, perhaps a requirement that, um, the water studies be updated, um, and we have complete water studies for each of the project. I'm not advocating exactly one way or another, because I know there's a lot to talk about on it, legal, legalities and so forth, but I think it's a discussion that we need to have, and it's, we're not alone in it, other cities are having that same discussion. And following along with that one, it brings me to my next request, which is a request of an appeal of the planning commission's approval of RPD 193, um, another Springville development, and it was, was, um, approved at their last meeting. The basis, again, for that is the water issue and what appears, and I use the word "appears," to be outdated and incomplete water studies. So for those reasons, I think that it needs to be discussed here at the council level. I think the council needs to make some decisions, how we're going to handle the water issue in the short term, even if we have long-term, um, solutions, and I'll use the Desalter as an example. We can't seem to get the approval on it yet, but even so, it's gonna take a couple of years to get up and running. So I think, um, the thing that we need to do for our community is we, as a council and with staff, need to have an open, honest, and public discussion on how to handle this issue. And then, if nothing else, we can tell the public that we've talked about it and come to some conclusions, conclusions one way or another. And that's my request on that. I have two items in that.
All right. Anything else?
That's all I have.
I don't have a couple, three things I failed to...
Sure.
...report, and also, I've gotta bring, I wasn't ready till Charlotte got here, but I'm gonna do it now. Um, first of all, I went to EDC VC meeting, and we didn't have a quorum. Day before holidays, I don't know why they have a meeting, but we had a meeting and no quorum. So we had a, a speakers panel there, they're very good, um, and that, I'll make that brief, and that's gone. Um, what was the other one? Tom, go ahead. Oh, anyway, that's the one, the main one I had to put, because that's an advertised hearing. Um, I was gonna do this next week, because I want Charlotte, our next meeting, because I want Charlotte to be here, but I've had a concern for water for a long time. As you know, I've go to all the water conferences, I've been up to Oroville lately and saw the, saw the, the poor dam, and down over 100 feet, and Bruce saw what it's looked like. I don't know what it looks like today, but it's gotta be lower. So we do have, we have to realize we have a water problem. Uh, it's worse than I've seen it since I've been here 52 years, and, and it's not gonna get any better. With council permission, I request that staff prepare, uh, a council policy that would halt, uh, would halt any new building permits that, without allotments, until the new, uh, Desalter plant is completed or until drought, uh, status has been reduced or resolved. Also, I'd like, I'd also request that all permits now in the process are approved be restricted to stage three status, allowing builders to meet drought stat, drought-resistant planning and landscaping and other water, um, services, water-saving devices. This way, we do it ahead of time, not later. We let the builders are building those now, meet those requirements now in stage three, so we can, uh, have more water than we're putting, than we're taking out of the system, more water coming in than taking out. And according to staff, that's what we've been doing as a policy. And, you know, these new developments have to have more water that, that's coming out of that project than's, than's leaving it, or, or I should say, not coming out, but its resources are going in. And so I think we've done a really good job, but now I think it's time to, let's get ahead of the game and bring in those, those drought-resistant things ahead of time. I'd like to refer that to city council, uh, to the staff, to bring back a potential policy statement for us.
Well, apparently, there's two council members who wish to have a discussion on water and water moratoriums and, and...
I didn't say moratorium.
I did.
Yeah, I didn't say that.
So, uh, I think we'll have it now. Whether we can have appropriate, uh, staff response by, in two weeks is another matter, and I'm gonna leave it up to the city manager to determine when to place this on the agenda. But there's no sense putting it on the agenda if we don't have the research done to talk about it and bring back some answers to, as to what state laws are involved, what, uh, other issues are involved, other than just, uh, saying we're going to stop approving projects. So, uh, with that, we'll, uh...
And, your honor, uh, excuse me, but I had two pieces to mine, and my second one was the appeal of the RPD 193. And that one has to, you have to agree to hear that at our next meeting, or I lose that timeframe to do that.
Well, I, I wasn't talking about that one.
Okay, so, oh, I thought you were, you were done, sorry.
No, I was just talking about your request for a moratorium.
A discussion of a moratorium.
So, uh, that, that will be, uh, that's, that is appropriate appeal, and it'll be within the timeframe.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I just want to make a comment of the politics of water here, and, you know, we've all become experts on water here, and we've all been educated a whole lot more on water than what many of us ever were, uh, you know, past. But I want to make sure to make a comment here that, to my knowledge, this city has never approved a development without the procurement of water, and I think that's important here, that we are not like some other states and not like other cities. To my knowledge, anything that we've ever improved, from my 19 years on the council, have procured a source of water. Now, we can certainly debate that, we can certainly come up with new models and everything, but I think that's important for the general public to know that.
And, your honor, if I might, that's a, that's a very important piece of that discussion we need to have, and if that's true, then it needs to be discussed. And when I go back to my appeal of this particular project, there's a feeling out there that perhaps some of the water studies were out of date and perhaps not, uh, complete, and that's what I would like to hear, if indeed it was or it wasn't. And if it's fine, then that's, that's the way it goes. If it's not, then it's something that needs to be corrected.
Okay, well, that's why, uh, we're gonna have to have some research done by the staff on all that because of these, these issues, so, uh, the request for an appeal for the, uh, the, um, recent approved, uh, development in, uh, Springville will be heard, and the other one is to the request by either, uh, councilmember Morgan or McDonnell will be scheduled as soon as this city manager feels he's got, uh, sufficient information and, and study to, uh, present a report.
Good, thank you.
Okay? All right. Um, let's see what, uh, I attended the Airport Authority, uh, meeting on May 14th, and the only thing we did there was to raise, they raised the fees on various, uh, hangars and facilities at the airport. Uh, I also, uh, attended a meeting of the Civic Alliance, the State, uh, State of the Region's presentation. You recall that was done two years ago, and they've updated it to 2015. Uh, that, uh, report will be, uh, is, is being circulated, and I'm sure that we will have a request for a presentation by them to present it to the city council. It's pretty much in line with what the trends have been that was raised in 2013. Um, also, attended the Memorial Day Services out at the, uh, Camarillo, uh, or Caneo Mountain Memorial Park. It was well, well-attended, a lot of people there, and, uh, it was, uh, it was a well-moving ser, so, service. Uh, last Friday, I went over, or Thursday, went over to Ventura to, uh, represent us on the Peace Officers Memorial Service, again, another moving, uh, service, in which they honored all the peace officers who had been killed in line of duty in Ventura County from, from its inception. And the latest, of course, was one of our officers, uh, from the Sheriff's Department, Eugene Kuzin, Kuzinshenko, Kuzinshenko. His mother and father were there, along with, uh, I think an uncle. And, uh, I took in the graduation, one of the graduations, one of the commencement services for, uh, the university. It's always nice to visit that and see all these young people, bright-eyed and bushy-tailed, ready to go out and conquer the world. Uh, and finally, uh, I got a letter, which I have given to the city clerk to put on the next month's agenda, uh, from EV Hospital, Dignity Health, asking for us to, uh, consider a contribution to their hospital campaign that's going, is, is underway now, and, uh, so that will be on, I think it's next, the next council meeting agenda, consider. And, uh, I think that's pretty much it. I'm, I, uh, I appreciate the fact that we're, uh, getting some of these things taken care of with water. I think it is an important issue. There's a lot of misconceptions out there and a lot of, um, ideas that are nice for one, but it's hard to translate into a, to a city-wide event or something, so we'll be talking about that as we go through it. All right, is there anything else to come before this council? We have, uh, so these, um, study sessions, and we also have the, uh, executive sessions, so, uh, there's no objection, we will stay in research. 7:30. We'll call the session of the city council of Camarillo back to order, and, uh, Councilmember McDonnell, would you at least send the flag salute?
Please rise and join us in flag salute. With your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We, uh, go to the agenda, we have, uh, is there any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Uh, first item we have is, uh, public comments, and we have a number of those, and we will start calling them up. These are people who've filled out a blue, uh, speakers card. We simply ask you to, uh, state your name for the record and re, remember that you have three minutes, uh, to make your comments. Uh, first one is Billy Gorbasi.
Hi, my name is Billy Gorbasi. I'm 14 years old, and I'm in Boy Scout Troop 858, chartered by P. Suthon Church. I've been in the Boy Scout program for over five years, and I really enjoy it. Now I'm a life scout, which is one rank away from Eagle. Mr. Schlangen, who's the head assur at my church, St. Mary Magdalene, told me about the idea of having a permanent fire pit for the use of retiring flags in the city of Camarillo. One of the things I've learned through my scouting... One of the things I've learned through my scouting journey was how you need to treat, respect, and show pride in the American flag. As a Boy Scout, I have learned how to participate in flag ceremonies. One of the wonderful memories that I've had in my scouting years is seeing other Boy Scouts at Boy Scout camps perform flag retirement ceremonies. They do it in such an honorable way and do a wonderful job at it. Our family owns an old American flag that should be retired, and I think many other people in the city have the same issue, and they don't know what to do with the flags that they have. I think it'd be a wonderful idea for the city to offer a place for the citizens of Camrio to bring their flags, so that we could retire them in an honorable way. Mr. Schlangen has also told me that he has seen beautiful permanent fire pits for the purpose of retiring flags in other cities. Our idea is to have the same or better fire pit that the citizens of Camrio can be proud of. Possible location might be near the Veterans Memorial and Constitution Park. I would like to propose and build the flag retirement fire pit as my Eagle project. Also, I'd like to coordinate and be involved with the flag retirement ceremonies as a member of the Boy Scouts of America in Ventura County Council, so that the people of our community can witness the heartwarming and respectfulness of the flag retirement ceremonies. That's it.
Okay.
Very good.
Really, that was great.
Very good.
Yes?
Explain that, young man, that we don't have much we can do.
Excuse me?
It's not on the, is it my voice or the camera?
It's, it's not on the agenda tonight, we can't do much about it, but it's great, soul, I mean, thought, for us, a good thought pattern for us to go think about this and see if it can be done around here. I like the idea.
What we're looking for is if you could direct staff to work with us.
We can't tonight.
Well, we could, we could direct staff to work, but we're not making any.
We're just looking for you to direct staff so that we can work on finding a proper location, how much this is going to cost, and what it's going to look like, so that we can come back to you with all that information and having it an agenda item, so you could vote on it at that time.
Sounds good.
Could I add one thing? You know, the thought that popped in my mind would be another good thought to look at is the middle of the circle at the Boy Scout house. Because you've got the barn, and you've got that nice little circle there in the middle, you could make a really nice spot right there at the Boy Scout house.
Yeah, we're open to all suggestions, we just wanted to come up with a recommendation, and working with staff, hopefully come up with where the proper location would be.
You know, another one, just for fun, behind the pavilion, you've got all that grass back there in the back, all kinds of activities could go on around this fire pit for different kinds of things.
And back there is all the kids running and playing.
Well, that's what it would be, there'd be a pit there, you can't play on it.
Well, why don't we, why don't we refer this to city manager, and he can have someone get in touch with you. I assume you're the liaison, David?
Yes, but as he mentioned, Billy will be doing a part.
Is this, is this going to be for your Eagle Scout project?
Yes, it's going to be.
He has to do the legwork.
Terrific. Okay, if there's no objection, we'll just ask the city manager to-
Yeah, and I'll add in a few more events for him to get involved with if he wants.
Okay.
I want to watch him lift those stones.
Congratulations to you, good job.
Make sure you invite us all to your Eagle Scout ceremony.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Barbara Williams.
Barbara Williams, city council members, I am again speaking to you as one of the nine-hundred-and-thirty-two residents of the five HOAs in Camrio Springs. I thank you for recognizing the need to continue the emergency proclamation to assist the HOAs and our residents. We are grateful for all that you have done. You indicated you would look into our concerns regarding the insurance implications of the release the city is requiring to secure permits. We have heard nothing. It has been over five and a half months since the last debris flow, and still our neighbors in the yellow and red tagged homes do not have permits to repair or rebuild their homes. It may not seem like a long time to you, but it is an eternity to those who are not in their homes and want stability in their lives. You also said you found some additional funding. We would just love to know what is going on and what the city is considering doing. Being kept in the dark is no longer an option. It gives us the impression that you do not care, and I know that is not correct. We have already lost one couple. Here's an excerpt of what I got, quote, "I wanted to restore the place, but the expense over and above what the insurer provided was not sufficient, and my husband's admittance to Roseville Hospital in the long recovery time had proven to be too much. Not getting permits in a timely manner was a final nail in the coffin. I sincerely hope that the other neighbors can get that situation resolved soon. We were original owners, having purchased the property in December nineteen eighty-six. The spring was a wonderful place to live, and so many great neighbors would be sorely missed." But that is not the only thing you should be concerned with. We have a community that is still vulnerable, because there have only been mitigation measures, not a permanent solution. We have debris platforms that have not been verified, and now experts predict an El Nino that could be worse than the one in nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight. That means we don't have time to waste. We need something more permanent on Caneo Mountain. The Washington Post reported on May twenty-first, quote, "El Nino has reached a weak to moderate intensity and is growing stronger. Many computer models are now forecasting a strong to very strong event by the fall. Some simulations even suggest it could exceed the mighty nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight event, the most powerful modern records." The article is attached to the package I gave you. In a May fourteen article, NOAA has indicated nearly all models predict El Nino to continue throughout two thousand and fifteen. That article is attached as well. We don't have time to waste, we need to repair now. Thank you, Barbara Williams. Any questions?
Well, let me just say that the city councils met this evening and have revised a, an agreement or a acknowledgement form, and will be getting this out to those persons involved in the seven homes, hopefully by the end of this week.
Thank you so much.
So that's where we are, and as far as any other information?
No, the part about funding that I mentioned a couple meetings ago, was the NRCS was considering some funding, but we're no near, close to knowing what their determination is.
And hopefully, Mr. Feng, this time we can be evolved early in the NRCS planning, and not-
Oh, we're just taking very small baby steps, the initial steps. Now, I'm not sure if they'll even send an engineer out, but I had mentioned is they're looking at the feasibility.
Well, Don's already been out there, I understand.
I understand that, but that is still their determination, NRCS. I don't want to mislead you.
Right.
They have to get their district engineer out to the site, and they have to find an exception to provide additional funding for a non-event.
And that's where we can come in together. You know, all of the members of the Camrio Springs community out there are willing to go to Congressman Brownlee and to help her secure the funding and to get it approved. We totally understand that, you know, the funds are tight because of all the tornadoes and the flooding that we've had in the U.S., but, you know, I'm convinced that they can find something to help us out. So we're going to be there to help get that funding.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. Mr. Phil Eads.
Thank you, Phil Eads, sixty-four sixteen San Como Lane. I, I think Barbara stole most of my thunder, but I'll, I'll step through it as quickly as I can in my three minutes. Just a comment on the building permit issue, I heard Mayor Little talk to that, and appreciate the action there, and we look forward to seeing that and taking a look at that. The one, the one issue beyond that, there are others, but one issue beyond that is the hillside mitigation. Our property is located directly in the path of the, what is called the new erosion zone, which has been identified in the, some of the studies that have been done. And this is the area that, of course, I'm mostly concerned with, but of course, it may impact quite a number of people, and in fact, it already has. It's affected us at that address, and then our neighbors to the downhill side, Zalinski's and possibly Elliott as well, if, if things aren't addressed. We know that Don has, from NRCS to Mr. Feng's point, Don has been out there, I think, twice in the last few weeks, and is putting together some recommendations. I don't know if that will develop into a plan or not. We are, we are hopeful that that happens. I understand there's a June tenth date attached to that. Hopefully, that will stay intact and things will move forward. In anticipation of that, I would simply request that the city council consider the recommendations and the plan, if that's what in fact is presented, in an urgent manner. We, we are literally five months away from another Halloween storm. And, and, you know, from, from our perspective on, on our little corner of the world at San Como Lane, there has been significant work done around our property and to the sides of our property, but not directly above our property relative to the new erosion zone. And there's no doubt in my mind that if we have another rainstorm similar to Halloween or December twelfth, we are going to be damaged yet again. There's no doubt about it. So as far as the funding is concerned, clearly, we understand that those are issues, and to echo Barbara's point, we are certainly, as a, as a group, and for myself personally, I'll do whatever it takes to help the city and the city council and the staff do whatever we can to enhance our position as far as funding is concerned. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And just be assured that this council is in working, not only with our staff, but we are encouraging that all kinds of avenues will be explored in this process, including the federal government, but others.
Great, we appreciate your efforts, thank you.
Thank you. Sean Crane.
Hello, this is my first time coming forward here to speak publicly. I am a new resident of Camrio Springs, and moved in last April fourth, two thousand and fourteen, to what I thought was a beautiful paradise, Camrio Springs. Left Oak Park, which is also in Ventura County, and soon after moving here, and I, I bought my property right on the pond, I'm at seventy-seven Margarita, it was just beautiful with all the birds and whatnot. And by the middle of the summer, we were losing our water very rapidly, as everybody knows, and we actually almost did lose it. We, as a community, tried to mitigate our own way when we didn't get any support from the golf course owner, and the community, our, our community development person, who is a wonderful man, tried to work with us. Dave, I forget his last name right now, I think it's Dave, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, I am fighting my own battle right now with cancer. I just had a recurrence that came in on January after fourteen months of being cancer-free. My concern health-wise was the pond, because if it dries out, we end up with a dust storm. We heard that we could have valley fever at its highest rate in California because of the drought. So I'm kind of between a rock and a hard spot now. I've got the pond, which we've been told is going to dry up because we have a drought. I have a mountainside across the street from me that, thank God, is not where these poor people are in the springs, but we could very potentially have flooding, because the pond overflows, it takes on, it's a flood channel. So anything that's happening up there will end up happening right in front of me. So I'm a little concerned about all of this, and I know you guys are working very hard to try to help mitigate this, it's a big problem. I know there's a company that, a property that is owned by a trust company, but we, we really appreciate anything you can do to help us out. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Art Silver.
My name is Art Silver, I'm going to just make this very brief, I'm going to relinquish my time, because I'm with Sean Crane and everything she said, I would have said the same thing, so I'll make it very brief, and thank you. Hope something could be done with this very serious, serious problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted Elliott.
I will also be very brief, because Barbara and Phil kind of covered what I like to say. I did have the opportunity, two or three weeks ago, to meet with Don Affman of the NRCS. She was kind enough to talk to me for a while, and she and an engineer from NRCS had gone up in the hill and done some inspections, and I was led to believe by them that they had some very positive ideas of what could be done, and that they would be submitting that once it was approved by their higher-ups. I'm just requesting that when and if that report comes in, that the city be proactive in working with NRCS, because it would be very helpful for us in terms of mitigation. The other thing that's important is getting our neighborhood put back together again, and that involves the permit process, which you have discussed and mentioned, and I just, again, want to emphasize that it's important to a lot of people to get our neighborhood together so we can live a normal life. Thank you.
You know, real quick, I don't think you have to worry about the city being involved in it, as soon as they mention any kind of money or help, we're right on top of them. That's proven from the past stuff, so you don't have to worry about asking us to get in there, we'll be there.
All right, but I'm just hoping that the report is given to you, and somebody will be looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Wilson.
My name's Chuck Wilson, I live in seventy-five Margarita, Camrio Springs Country Club Village, that's the mobile home park. Again, I've been there about seven and a half years, until December primarily, it was a wonderful place to live. I've been a board member there for seven years, starting with the night of the, of the flood. CCB have spent approximately a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which we do not have budgeted, for cleaning drains, cleaning up the streets. We went out and purchased twenty-seven K rails to prevent any further mud from Guytana to the south, and also from the top of Camp Springs Road. We've made every effort, you know, possible to try to protect our own community. We've also had some problems above the RV park. To date, we have corrected just about everything we could possibly correct, and we're pretty much back to normal, with the exception of the property that lies south of Camrio Springs, or of the RV park, which is actually at the top of Camp Springs Road. We've had a couple grading contractors out there, none of the contractors even want to touch that, because of the possibility of the rocks above the verticals coming down. Even they said with grading permits, they were, they were concerned about it. The geologist, Martin, that walked that, he has the same concerns, and then by looking at our property markers up there, it, it appears that the Longo property runs adjacent to that, to our property, which is just south. So even if we wanted to get in there, and we could get, get the permits from the city and do this, and at this point, we've done everything at our own expense, which is, you know, we've got a lot of senior people in there, of course, and we've got a lot of them that are all on real, real fixed incomes, because I'd say the average age is probably closer to eighty than it is to sixty. But we really need the city's help in working with Longo, if that's his property adjacent, to be able to get in there and make the necessary corrections, because it appears that the mud has come down off those slopes, and it's changed the flow of the water. The water was coming down off those verticals, and actually going back to the east, which there was a drain at the top of Camp Springs Road, which empties into the golf course. Now it's diverted the water to the west. And even the, even the morning that Jim Wolfery, who's the president of our association, went to the fire department to discuss them, the probability of us putting the K rails to block off those two streets for emergencies, they would have to come around the street. They were standing there looking at the maps, and they told us right then and there, you know, you have some major problems here, the way the water's flowing, and the water's flowing down into your park now and not away from it. So to date, we've had very little intervention from the city, and we can't seem to get anybody to really to come up there and take a look at that, so I really appreciate whatever you could do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Bob Spillman.
Bob Spillman, thirty-four, Margarita, Country Club Village, on the Springs. I'm a board member at CCB- at CCB as well as the Common Area Board. As everyone here knows, we've experienced a big issue there. I'm reiterating a lot of what everybody else said. But one of the larger concerns is the financial burden this is putting on a senior community. And if we have to take on a project like we've been told, putting in basins or something on someone else's property, if at millions and millions of dollars, there's no way that this community can survive from that. It would totally bankrupt the community. So, we need to come up with solutions. We need to get Longo to do the right thing. We need the city's help to step up and have them do that, whether it be with police powers or however we do it. But we need to get it corrected. We have homes that are in danger at the top of Inez and Christina. The rock and the debris is only feet from these people's homes. So, if anything we can do, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hal Hyman.
Hal Hyman, 64, 73, San Como Lane. Just want to go back to right after the Halloween debris flow, mud flow, and all the press was out. It seemed that they were all out. When I say press, LA Times was out, KTLA was out, KNBC was out, KCBS was out, Channel 11 was out, and maybe more. And to a person in Camarillo Springs, they thanked the city of Camarillo for all they had done and they were doing. Our community is grateful to the wonderful job this city has done. And to a TV reporter, every one of them wanted us to let them know how things were going. Are things going to go well for you? Please let us know. We'd love to come out and talk to you. I want to be able to contact one of them or all of them and say, "This city is still working on behalf of Camarillo Springs and the city of Camarillo. I'm proud of all your work and all you've done. Just keep it up." Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that comment. And let me just say that I don't think there's been one day that's gone by in this city that Camarillo Springs issues of some type or another has not been talked about, either between the council members or with council and staff or between staff. It is the overriding issue that this city has faced for the last six months ourselves. So, we understand what is the concerns you have. Thank you for that comment. Gail Edwards.
Hi, Gail Edwards. I live in Camarillo Springs also. I actually will relinquish most of my time simply because you've already addressed. The issue that I was going to talk about was trying to get the people back into their homes for repairs, the ones that are in the yellow-tagged homes, and trying to get the red-tagged home people switched into a yellow-tagged situation and then to be able to get their repairs in. So, I think it's just so important to get our seniors back to their normal lives and let us get on with ours through the retirement. Again, we thank you for everything that you've done. And I think Camarillo's a great place to live. And I'm very, very happy that I'm a resident here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Susan Span.
Hi, my name is Susan Span. I was here to talk about the building permits. So, I'm not quite sure whether or not I'm moot. But what had happened was we had received an email from Renee in your building and safety department saying that basically the city was willing to go ahead and issue permits, provided that we either signed a release of liability or we were able to get a geologist's report with a mitigation plan. So, I didn't want to sign the release. And I didn't have a report with a mitigation plan. But I did have a report from a geologist that was actually hired by my insurance company that talked about my home. I was one of the original yellow-tagged homes. And my house was filled with mud and water. But the structure was sound and the foundation is sound. The city has done a wonderful job of doing some mitigation work above my home and around my house. And I feel that it's safe for me to move back in. I think that the plans that we have in place, we have the Ventura County Alert System that comes out and tells us what the weather is going to be like, when we can expect rain and when the storms are coming. And we have a wonderful evacuation plan in place within our own community. We also have all the city services. So, I don't think that there would be an opportunity that I wouldn't be aware of something that was coming that could pose a danger to me personally. So, I had written a letter to the city council and talked about all this, but I have not received a response yet. So, I just wanted to make sure that you had received my letter, which came to you on the 5th of May, and see if maybe you could respond to me. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me say that our meeting this afternoon, late afternoon, dealt with the issues of the building permits. And as I said, there will be letters going out to you probably yourself. And I think there's seven homes involved. That will hopefully clarify what the city's intent is and what we expect of the property owners.
All right. Very good. I look forward to seeing that. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, that concludes the cards I have on the Camarillo Springs area issues. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard before we move on to another? And let me just, again, reiterate this. This is a very important issue for all of us here at the, both the staff as well as the council. And we are exploring all avenues. And there's some others that we are going to be exploring down the road in very short order. So, we thank you for your patience. And, you know, we haven't had a disaster like this in our city. And so, it's a little new to us, too, to have to deal with it. But we're doing it. And we've got a staff that's committed to doing it, too. So, thank you very much. And we appreciate your patience in this. Hopefully, we can get this thing behind us very quickly. All right. Matthew Lorimer.
Matt Lorimer. Before, again, my main topic. Last city council meeting, we talked about user fees. Mr. Morgan said, basically, people saving a couple thousand dollars. Who really saved was developers, over $11,000. Tentative tract map, 26 to 75, $1,500 savings. Tentative tract map, 76 or greater, $2,251. That's $11,000 of love given to developers. You know, if you need a signed permit as a business owner, basically, you got $12 off. A banner permit, $7 off. If you need a home occupational permit, you got $13 off. So, the people who fared well were developers. Now, I'm going to read my letter. Dear Camarillo City Council, the Rent Review Commission has been around for 30 years under the guidance of the Camarillo City Council. During the years, and currently, the Camarillo City Council has supported the commission's work as a way to allow parties to come to a fair and just decision process. On April 24, 2015, a rent review board hearing was held regarding a 5% increase at the Lamp lighter Camarillo Mobile Home Park regarding Mount Lorimer and Sandy Lane. The recommendation May 6, 2015, from the Rent Review Commission called for a 1.7% increase. This was due to the maintenance issues along with current health and safety issues, along with a lack of communication with the HOA and residents. This was the reason for the decision. The Camarillo City Council, which supports the Rent Review Commission, important work, should write a letter to the owner of IPG to support the findings and ask the owner to follow the decision of the Rent Review Commission, May 6, 2015. The Camarillo City Council has written letters in support of other issues regarding city issues, the people or the city. You know, I've been coming here for over five years. Mr. Little, a couple months ago, asked the city council, "Hey, we should write a letter to support the local water district in a situation." Several times, each of you have called for a written letter. We're not asking for your own opinion. We're asking you to support the Rent Review Commission, which you agreed, said works well for 30 years. And to remind you, Mr. Morgan said, "Nobody has ever not followed that recommendation." Well, the owner did not follow that recommendation. And I think as you, a city councilman, you support the Rent Review Commission. Again, you didn't want rent stabilization in town. You said the Rent Review Board works great. Each one of you took topics during the last three months and said, "It works great." Now, I'm asking you, a city council, not as your own personal opinion, but send a letter to the owner of IPG, Brian Fitter, and say, "Look, you participated in the Rent Review Board hearing. They came out with a finding of 1.7. Respectfully, you should basically go along with that recommendation." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Is there any questions of Mr. Lorimer?
I have a question of staff. Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Did we get, I recall Bruce or anybody else, did we get a response from the individual that owns that mobile home park with the response to what the Rent Review Commission is? It believes to me that something came through my desk.
Yes. Yes, the owner did respond in writing.
Okay.
And the residents received the letter, or the petitioners did.
All right. Okay. That's what I had.
Okay. Well, thank you, Matt.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
I hope you'll consider it.
We will. Vern Savola.
Vern Savola. I am a retired senior citizen, retired veteran, trying to live in this wonderful community of Camarillo and trying to make a fixed income last. For two years, the US government says that the cost of living did not rise enough to give us an increase in our social security, back-to-back years. IPG, apparently, they suffered all kinds of problems because they raised my space rent $25 a month, each month, for two years. I guess they're having a hard time getting along, making a profit off of us. I'm not going to talk much longer. I think Matt Lorimer has expressed a lot of our views. We do have a senior citizen in our park, and they're all on fixed incomes. Fitter doesn't care. He just wants a profit. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last card I have is from Brandon Raymer.
Hello, Brandon Rayme with Director of Realty for the Ventura County Community Development Corporation. Here today to talk about the issues of basically raising home prices here in Ventura County, as well as the fact that many millennials are having a very difficult time becoming homeowners and losing hope. Our organization is a nonprofit organization here in Ventura County. We're actually located in Oxnard. And basically, we offer realty, education and counseling, and lending services. So, basically, here today, I'm here to talk about the issues of the fact that the prices are raising to where they're at. I just listed a house in Camarillo, Antonio, the Antonio Properties, 249, one-bedroom property, 690 square feet. HOA is there, $300 a month. You go up, the next two-bedroom unit goes up to $340,000. And it's about a $200 a month HOA. So, with that being said, we have to find a way to try to bridge that gap. And one of the things that we're offering is down payment assistance. We offer up to $45,000 down payment assistance that goes to anywhere in Ventura County. It's for first-time home buyers, as well as there are income qualifications to qualify for this down payment assistance. So, it's basically under 80% AMI, which a household size of one would be under $50,000 a year. Many people do qualify for it, as well as, you know, I sold a property in Port Wineemi to an individual, household size of three. And their purchase price was 212, three-bedroom, two-bath. Their total mortgage was $1340 a month. That was with a $400 a month HOA. They still need 3% of their own money. So, they had to save $10,000. They had to have strong credit. So, I'm here today to talk about our organization because we have resources available that the citizens of Camarillo need to find out about. And I'm requesting any way to help spread the good word of the work that we're doing here today.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, can you maybe leave your business card with us?
Yes.
Phone numbers and emails and whatnot. So,
Will do.
Perhaps we can get that information out to the public.
I think we probably figure a way to disseminate it.
Yeah. I have another question. Is there any age restrictions on help from your organization?
There are no age restrictions. So, as long as the individual or household plans to intend to occupy the property, they haven't been a homeowner in the last three years. Some families who have had a divorce recently, they can still qualify as a first-time home buyer. And it's based on household size and income. So, if it's a household size of four, I believe it's about $70,000 a year they can make. And there's state assistance as well as federal money. So, $15,000 of that is a grant that's forgiven after five years. Additional $30,000 is a deferred loan. So, it's 3% simple interest. And when they go to sell their property, they get to make all the equity in the home. They don't have to sell it to a low-income family. It helps, this truly helps break the cycle of poverty because it gives everybody an opportunity to try to purchase a home.
Can he leave a couple, three cards?
I will. Actually, I brought about five folders of our information.
Did you give it to the city clerk there?
Yes.
May I ask a question before you leave? You mentioned you are a nonprofit organization or a government agency or?
Nonprofit organization.
And your funding source is?
Correct. So, we have a realty department that generates commissions, and that helps keep us sustainable. We do have funding that comes in for our counseling. Counseling is a HUD-approved agency. So, they offer education and counseling. So, the primary mission is to help increase financial literacy. So, it's not all just about homeownership, but homeownership does create personal wealth and stability for families.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Well, one of the things that this recession has done is to create a shortage of houses that people can move out of and into, thereby freeing up other houses and older houses at other scales of income, which is creating the shortage of the houses you're talking about.
Correct.
And I know in our city here, we had, in six, seven years, we had like 20 houses built, you know. So, hardly anything.
It is.
So, thank you very, I think.
Thank you all for your time. And we do have a couple events coming up. We have a homeownership event on June 6. It's Saturday, June 6, from 11 to 3, free to everybody. And we'll have about 22 of our partners, Pacific Oaks, Union Bank, many other big banks that will be there to basically educate. The slogan of the event is "A Dream Within Your Reach."
Where's it held?
Where is it going to be?
It's going to be at our location in Oxnard. So, it's right off of Rice and Sturgis.
Rice and Sturgis.
2231 Sturgis Road, Oxnard, California. And we would love to do something here locally.
You're in the industrial area.
I'm sorry?
You're in the industrial area.
Correct.
Right at the corner.
Yeah. It's actually pretty close to Habitat for Humanity.
Exactly.
Right?
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll see what we can do to get it publicized.
Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you. That's all the cards I have. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the city council? Yes. Terry.
Terry Bray, 63, Via Centra, Camarillo, Lamp lighter Mobile Home Park. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, and I didn't know what Matt was going to be talking about. But I wanted to address the rejection letter from Mr. Fitterer in regards to the findings of the Rent Review Board. I strongly suggest that you reread the content of that letter because he states that the findings of the December Rent Review Board hearing that they felt substantiated the 5% increase, he's holding the city to that. He's saying that the residents were not even entitled to the Rent Review Hearing in He's saying that the residents were not even entitled to the rent review hearing in April, and that makes it a very awkward situation. And so I don't know how you would want to handle that. I don't know how you feel about being represented that way. We're very concerned that he's under the belief that the rent review board's findings that were stated, basically, a 5% increase for the homeowners of Lamp lighter for the year of 2015 is to be applicable to every homeowner. So therefore, why were we allowed to have a rent review hearing in April? So there's a conflict there as to what is acceptable for the rent review board to state, how Mr. Fitterer has now used it against us and is stating that we didn't have the right to even have the hearing that justified a 1.7% increase. So again, like Matt had mentioned, without a rent stabilization ordinance, now there's confusion on what the rent review board can state and what is accountable. The homeowners are basically abandoned again to have any recourse. The hearing that took place in April was quite a battle, substantiated with endless facts and figures that IPG could not contradict, and we were thrilled that the 1.7 was a determination based on those facts that were presented, but it doesn't make any difference. Mr. Fitterer is holding to the 5% increase with, like I said, that mention in the rejection letter that he says that's what the rent review board found in December. So he's basically saying the city's responsible. That's how I interpret it, and it's very concerning, and it's a very awkward and convoluted subject now, that what the rent review board can say, who's liable for that statement, he's using it, it doesn't help us, we went to battle, we got a lower percentage validated, and it's useless. What do you do?
Maybe that we want to have the city attorney give us his opinion on that. I don't know what the council's interested in that or not.
I'm just suggesting, please read that rejection letter.
Oh, I think all of us have read it.
I'm sure you have, but I'm just kind of surprised it wasn't even brought up about that statement that he made because now it's like, like I said, I'll be redundant. You know, he's holding the city accountable for a 5% increase that was determined in December, saying that we didn't even qualify to use the rent review board in April based on this blanket statement that was made by the rent review board. So--
Terry, we'll take a look at it again.
I would appreciate it because we're very frustrated. It was like a hollow victory, and affordability, as you know, has been the ongoing topic at the park.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your honor, if I might remind you, the policy committee is in the process of looking at the whole rent review commission, and I have that on my list to discuss, and I'm sure you'll bring it up as well when we meet again. So we'll talk about it in that venue as well.
Why don't you do that, and then perhaps you can share something with us.
Then we bring it back to council, and then that will be part of that discussion.
The last meeting was a very productive meeting, and we intend to, after this one, bring it back and report to the council.
We hope, yeah. We get something.
I think that's a good idea.
I would just like to throw in, great appreciation for that meeting. I don't know if you saw the article in the Acorn or not, it was covered very well, I think, wholeheartedly, and it's a monumental decision that I feel very privileged to be a part of, to leave that type of legacy for other mobile homeowners and also apartment dwellers, too. So thank you for the hard work on that.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anybody else out there that wishes to be heard on anything? If not, we'll close the public presentation, comments. I don't know that we have any other items to take up at this point in time, so we will adjourn to--
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor--
We'll go back, we'll recess.
Before you do that, I need to mention something. During the 6 o'clock break, I had a chance to check on the Order of Review provisions of the municipal code. You recall that Councilmember McDonald had raised that as a request prior to the break about an order for review on a particular item, I believe it was the RPD 193 in Springville. What I found in reviewing the code was Section 19.16.320D says that basically, for a review by the city council, to order a review requires a majority vote of your membership. So that is a request that needs to be voted on. However, under the Brown Act, you cannot take action on an item that's not on your agenda. So where that leaves us is that the Planning Commission's decision becomes final on Friday. So Friday would be the last day for the council to issue an order of review, and you do have time to schedule a special meeting on Friday. A special meeting under the Brown Act requires 24 hours' notice, and a special meeting can be called either by the mayor or by a majority of the members of the legislative body. So if the council is interested in making a decision about an order of review, there would need to be a special meeting on Friday. And it would be a relatively short special meeting because the only discussion at that time would be whether to schedule an order of review. There would not be a discussion on the order of review itself. The order of review would be scheduled for a future council meeting, whatever council meeting day you scheduled it for, if it was going to be June 10, for example, is your next regular meeting. So that's what the process is, and I wanted to bring that to your attention since it had been raised prior to the 6 o'clock break.
Well, if we have the special meeting on Friday, I can do it in the morning. I don't know if we're talking about time at this particular point right now.
Well, it would need to be 24 hours' notice, so perhaps the city clerk can help us out here. What would be the earliest time that the posting could be made? If it was going to be Friday morning, let's say 8:30 or 9 o'clock, would there be sufficient time to notice the meeting, like by 8:30 tomorrow morning, if it was going to be 8:30 on Friday?
Sure, I can't do until about 10.
Well, I, we have an Economic Development Committee meeting at 8:30 on Friday morning, and you have a committee meeting, I believe, at Friday morning, and I frankly am going off to a marriage retreat with my wife down in Malibu on Friday, and that's more important than--
(laughing).
--over here for council.
You better say that.
Let me ask you a question.
Oh, dear.
If we are, or if three of us, at least I'm hearing, and I don't know if Councilman Craven will be back on Friday--
She won't.
--but can we, it should only take us two minutes. Can we do it after those two meetings and before you take off?
I can be available up to about noon time.
Okay.
I can be available up to 10.
Well, Economic Development usually doesn't get through till--
9:30.
9:30, 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock, yeah.
Again, it should, all it, my understanding is, all it is is to agree to hear it.
9:30 is better for me, if that works, or a quarter to 10.
We can make it 9:30.
Yeah.
Will you be done with Economic Development by then?
Well, it just will be.
Barely.
Do we, we have Policy Committee?
No.
No, we don't have a meeting.
Typically, Economic Development Committee runs about an hour now.
So let's--
So 9:30, 9:45.
9:45 or 10, or just before 10. Kevin, you need to get it in order to go to work, right?
If I can, yeah.
Why don't we do 9:30?
I can't quite make 9:30, that's why I'm trying to push the locals to--
It's kind of pushing because I got some too. 9:45, and you make 9:45.
9:45 I could get here.
Okay, 9:45 it is.
Okay.
All right, if there's--
You need three people, you need three votes, right?
Well, the mayor can do it by himself, or if you take three votes to schedule it, so if the mayor's calling--
It's a council decision, not a mayor's decision, so--
Okay.
So you--
So will the city clerk then proceed to set a special meeting for 9:45 on Friday?
And is that the consensus of the council as well?
Is this the consensus of the council?
If I can make it, I have my calendar here, I know I have stuff going.
Yeah, I think we can.
We only need three, you know, again, it's just--
You need three, but maybe.
Okay.
So did we hear three votes? Kevin says yes, Bill says yes, and Jan is saying yes. Okay.
If I could, Brian, if I could ask a question, how many members do you need for the special meeting?
Three.
Just three, okay.
You need three votes, three permutives.
You need three, to, in order for you to have a quorum at the meeting, you need to have three, a minimum of three council members at the meeting on Friday, yes.
How do you need to vote for?
Three.
You only need three.
Well, we'll see what happens. That's why we're having the meeting. Okay, is there anything else to come before this council? If not, we'll stand in recess and adjourn to June 2nd, or to, June, May, what is Friday? May 29.
Yeah.